Go ahead and call the regularly scheduled meeting for October 13th, 2020 to order. Before we take a moment of silence, I just ask that everyone keep the family of Nicole Slagel, who passed away last couple of weeks, keep her family in your prayers and join me for a moment of silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Move to, I'm number one, Mayor's Minute. Welcome a couple of guests here. We have Mayor Madeline Luttrell from Bristol, Tennessee, who has joined us this evening. Appreciate him coming out. We also have a Boy Scout from Troop Number Eight who's here, and we appreciate him, as well as all the other young people that come and watch our city, local government in action. Remind people that our next meeting on October 27th, because this will be used for early voting, will be held at the school board office just across the street there. So again, after this, this is going to be used through Election Day for early voting, and today was the last day to register to vote. So hopefully, everyone is registered. If you're not, I think you can still go online until 11:59 tonight and register to vote. But I would encourage everyone to vote early. If you want to, you can vote early by mail. You can come here, City Hall, and vote in person, or you can use the drive-through window on Scott Street. And of course, you can vote on Election Day, November 3rd. But I do encourage everyone to vote. There are a lot of important issues, both at the federal, state, and even local level on the ballot. You know, in addition to that, well, I'd like to also thank, congratulate our city manager, who last week at the VML meeting was elected Vice Chair of the City Section, which gives him a seat on the board with VML. And I know he'll do an excellent job representing not just Bristol, but all of southwest Virginia, and giving them a voice in that organization. Finally, last thing is, and we'll hear a lot more later on, I'm sure, from Dr. Shelton. But as always, as we get into the fall and we see things going on, you know, we had a case here within City Hall, school system received notification, they had had a staff member earlier that had a case of COVID. Just to remind people, please, when you can, social distance. If you're indoors and you can't, wear a mask, wash your hands, because we want to keep our community as safe as we can. We want to keep our businesses open. We want to keep our schools open. So with that, if anybody has anything else? Okay. Item number two, city manager comments. Mr. Eads?
Mayor, just like you'd mentioned previously, Nicole Slagel passed away two weeks ago today, unexpectedly, and she was instrumental. Been an employee here at the city for over 14 years, was instrumental in our neighborhood watch program and our trunk or treat program. She will be sorely missed at the police department and throughout the city. She always would lend a helping hand, no matter what the issue was. And I know personally, I will miss seeing her. I normally would see her out back at City Hall, and I will miss seeing her and talking to her. But do keep her husband and her son in your prayers.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item number three, matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda item. We had one person sign up, Erica.
She's on her way. Sorry.
Well, do you want to speak for her, Jackie?
No, never.
Well, we'll go.
Would it be okay if I hit that?
Well, I was going to say, anybody else that wants to speak that didn't sign up, go ahead and give them a moment if they want to speak. So if you'd like to speak.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the city council members and so forth. I'm Jackie Knoflin, 21 Macoffa Circle. And as Ms. Mari says, I'm a citizen. I love my city and I own plenty. I thank for the opportunity to speak. Coming up with the Concerned Citizens Group, we're concerned citizens of the community. We've been decade, a couple of decades, in visiting these council meetings. We've been participating in citywide ventures and events in order to promote our city. We have been in the school board, in and out. We've been on one side, and maybe sometimes we've been over on the other side. But we want to present to you tonight, which we've already mentioned to the city manager, Mr. Eads, a declaration to denounce racism in our city, all forms of racism. And so he has in his hands, he's going to see if we can't get it on the agenda. But I wanted to give you and let you know that this is something that is trying to creep in even more so in our community. I've said many times, we're not Portland, Chicago, or some of the other places. But we are Bristol, Virginia. And I would like to see Bristol set an example, set an example of how a city can maintain its peace, how we can get along, how we can work things out, and how we can come and sit together at the table. So that's all I wanted to say to the council is that Community Concerned Citizens is here for you if you need us in the future.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Knoflin. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak during this non-agenda item? We'll give her just a second to come in since she had her signed. Erica, I heard you signed up, so we'll go ahead if you want.
I believe my mom did. I'm running a little late, guys. Dear leaders of Bristol, Virginia, we would like to offer a declaration to denounce racism in any form. It cannot and will not be accepted, ignored, or dismissed. It must be confronted head-on across our society and community. The time has come to uncover and destroy racism in all its forms. We find ourselves in a critical and historic time. While we could be secure in knowing that justice and equality are embedded in our values, the ethical and moral compass that centers us ultimately, we must realize that there is more work to be done and that we are being called to do it. As a leader in this community, by signing this declaration, support and agree to the following. We denounce all forms of hate speech, hate groups, and any system or individuals who jeopardize the decency of the life of Black Americans. We denounce racist acts of all kinds and lead by example to be anti-racist as leaders in this community. We also pledge to be leaders to those people of color in the community, to empower them as needed, and strive to provide them protection from acts of racism. The city of Bristol, Virginia, wants to ensure all community members, regardless of skin color and ethnicity, feel safe, included, equal, and protected. We look forward to learning, working, and growing together for a better Virginia community with a common goal to combat racism in our community. Respectful, I'm Erica Knoflin from Community Concerned Citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knoflin. Again, is there anyone else that wanted to speak during the non-agenda item? All right. Move to item number four, adoption of the agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne, and a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number one, regular agenda, a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission proposed revisions to zoning ordinance and maps. This time, I will go ahead and open the city council portion of the public hearing. Mr. Pollard, if you'd like to.
I'll declare the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission portion of the public hearing now open.
All right. Thank you. Staff report, Ms. Morgan.
We have had a few public hearings already on this matter, but in our mailing to contact 621 property owners, we realized we had missed five. So we contacted those, and that's the reason really for a subsequent public hearing. Three of those were those split zone situations that we have. One of the other ones did contact me, but when she learned what we were proposing, she was very much in favor of the proposed change. If I can, you know, describe a few of those if you need me to, but they were pretty obvious ones that needed to be changed, and they were on the map already. We just didn't get the letter to the property owner. The agenda packet that you have also contains recommended addendum to both the text and the maps, based on earlier comments and discussions. So it's sort of like an update since we had the work session. And we are waiting to, I guess, next step would be the Planning Commission meeting next week, their regular meeting to take up those staff recommendations. The extra time to have the public hearing also allowed a little bit more chance to make sure we had all consistent wording and references in the text. And there's also a page that includes some of those wording changes that were all not substantive, but pretty much clerical-type changes, and that's in your packet as well. In the interim between the last, between the work session and this public hearing, we did, I did receive two more comments, and I think just for the fact that we are having a public hearing, I wanted to just say that these are two additional map changes that have been requested. The Bob Morrison property is the, on the left, is the Bill Gatten Body Shop and Parts Store, and there's two different addresses there. If you can see, the B3 on the left, on the northern side. We intended to have all their property rezoned to B3, when I realized that the one in between where the parts store is didn't get shown that way on the map. I called them, and I've subsequently had two conversations just to make sure I got what they wanted right. And they, after talking about it, would rather that their property stay in one, both addresses, 120 and 138. So I just wanted to make that comment here at the public hearing. And then the owner of 1016 is a small building, sort of behind another building, right on Commonwealth. And the owner has contacted me and said they had a prospective buyer that would like that property to maintain its M2 zoning. So they sent me an email, and I wanted to convey that to you all. So those two would be additional potential changes on the proposed zoning map. And I will stop in case there are some comments, since it is a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. No one had signed up to speak at the public hearing, although if there is anyone that would like to comment, you can come up. Well, hearing none, I will go ahead and close the city council portion of this public hearing. Mr. Pollard?
I'll declare the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission portion of the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Move to item number two on the agenda, a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission, special exception request number 03-2020 for 712 Oakview Avenue to allow a community resource center in an R2 zoning district. At this time, I will go ahead and open the city council portion of the public hearing.
And open the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission portion of the public hearing open.
Okay. Staff report, Ms. Morgan.
Council and Planning Commission members, forward. This is a special exception request received by our office, actually, I guess, in August, and Planning Commission heard about it initially at their August meeting. And because of conflicts with the applicant, they asked that we push the public hearing back to this meeting time. So it is, the Housing Authority is the applicant. Trying to forward it, Jean. There we go. Who owns the property, and I'll show you that map of where that is, and you'll know this building, I think. Proposed use is a resource center for the community, and it's what they call an Envision Center. It's proposed for an existing building that has been in the past a daycare center and a community meeting place, right at the location of Johnson Court, where they own property there, and their apartments are there. The services to be located at the site would be educational classes, job search assistance, healthcare services, and counseling services as well. And I'm sure there's others, and they are here, the applicant, to describe better than I can about what's being proposed. But just to give you the location, is we're, I guess, just north of the Five Points intersection, and it is a building that has been in that location for some time, I'm not sure the age of it, but it's not too utilized at this point. And this is a use that the Housing Authority thinks will be an excellent location for what they want to do. So I know when the Planning Commission first heard about the request, there was the idea at that time of housing in addition to the Envision Center, Day Center for homeless services. They have since taken that component out of their request. So it would not be the Day Center there at that location. And I will, I think what they'd like me to do is have Jean play a short, two-minute video about the Envision Center, and then Lisa Porter, the executive director of the Housing Authority, is here to speak on behalf of the applicant and other speakers, I think.
We appreciate the work that the Department of Housing and Urban Development has done, not only for Bristol, but for other localities across the country, but in this specific case, we do appreciate that we have the opportunity to have one of these Envision Centers and be the first rural location in our state to have it. It'll be a good test run for everyone else, and we have a big opportunity to use it in a very positive way.
So the Envision Center is just a tremendous opportunity. It's an opportunity that lots of communities don't get, and the fact that Bristol, Virginia Housing has taken the lead on this, but it operates across state lines.
We are so excited at the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority to receive this designation. It is the only designation so far that serves two cities, two states, crosses all the boundaries, and is the only one in southwest Virginia.
With so many of our folks living at the poverty level or below, we have a lot of families that struggle every day just to provide those basic necessities for themselves and their children. And so this is such an exciting opportunity.
This is our main Envision area. We have computers, and we have classroom space, we have children's space, we have case management provided here as well, so connections to all kinds of resources in the community, and whatever people may need, we can connect them to that.
Thank you for allowing us to present this to you for consideration. I am Lisa Porter, the executive director for the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And we were fortunate to receive the Envision Center designation from HUD about five months ago. Since that time, we've done quite a bit of planning as to what we would like our Envision Center to be, because each one is very unique. And as you heard in the video, there are very few in the country. At the time that we got our designation, we were number 42, and number four in Virginia. Now there are six in Virginia. And Virginia contains 10% of all the Envision Centers that have been designated, so very proactive in the Commonwealth in that area. But what is an Envision Center? What HUD does with the designation, they don't provide funding, but they do provide resources for you. And so we have a monthly call that is just us, on the call with HUD, talking about our action plan that we submitted, and where the gaps are in that plan. And, you know, for us, we have gaps with daycare, transportation, food pantry, things like that. And they work with us to help address those gaps, and they use resources that typically are not available to us. They can, they've offered workshops and communication that they put us into with, for instance, the VDOT, Department of Justice, FDIC, all the players that are out there that are bigger than us, that we wouldn't typically have a contact person for. And they do workshops to show us what they have available that might help us to fill those gaps and reach those goals, and they work with us every month to try to do that. They also have another monthly call that is made up of all the Envision Centers in the state, and so we learn from others what's working in other communities that might work here. And we replicate things. If it's successful somewhere else, and we can use it here, then we try to do that. So our vision for the center that we have here in Bristol is that we would like to offer one-stop case management throughout the city, on both sides of the city. We've always offered case management for BRHA residents, but we want to expand that beyond BRHA clients, so that we can serve throughout the city on both sides. And we feel that that would help to address the poverty situation that exists and to help folks who are in need. With one-stop case management, there are many partners that we would pull into the Envision Center under one umbrella to provide services, so other agencies can make referrals to us if someone comes to them. And we could work with that person to see what resources they need in the community and connect them to those resources, so that you don't have someone in need who feels they have to go to four or five different agencies, they don't know where they're at, they're already in distress, and this could be a great comfort to those who are in need if they can go to one place and get some answers. And also, I want to mention, I know there was a question at the Planning Commission about the schools using the building that we're proposing. We have always worked with the school system to provide onsite services, not only in that building, but also in other buildings that we have, like our resident services building. But Highland View has traditionally had access to that building, and they provide onsite PTA conferences, parent-teacher conferences, registration, and that is wonderful for our clients, because they don't always have transportation. And we will continue to make that available within that Envision Center building. That'll just be another partner under our umbrella, and those services will not be hindered in any way. So we have some other speakers, or if you have questions?
Signed up to speak, Ms. Lisa Cofer?
Thank you. My name's Lisa Cofer, and I'm the executive director for United Way of Bristol. And I'm probably going to echo a little bit of what Lisa said, but one of the biggest gaps that we have in our community and have had for many years is a one place where folks that are really in a dire situation, maybe they don't know where to go, where they can go and get some help, where they can learn to navigate those resources. So United Way's been doing that, and we've been doing that for years, and I feel like we do a really good job at it. But that's not what we're trained to do. But because people don't know where to go, and we don't have case management available just for anyone in our community, they come to us. And I'm on the phone with Lynn Pennell and her group, probably daily, about different folks, and we're happy to do that. But what happens is, we help them navigate those resources, pull those resources in, and then they go off to do that, and then we go on to the next client. And so the Envision Center is going to be able to help provide even greater impact for those families and those individuals, because what'll happen is, they can do what we do and dig really deep to find out what the issues are and how they can be helped, and what they can do to help themselves. You know, maybe they don't have childcare, and they can't work because they don't have affordable childcare. Maybe their car broke down, they don't have the money to get that fixed, so they're going to lose their job. I mean, we have fielded since COVID hit, almost 500 calls from folks. And it's not just a matter of saying, "Call 211," or "Call the Salvation Army." We spend time with them and help them figure out, first of all, what the issues We spend time with them and help them figure out, first of all, what the issues they are facing are and how we can best meet those needs. Our community has great resources, but right now, we don't have a place where people can go and they know they can go and get that help. It's huge that HUD designated our community and the Housing Authority. Great job with the Envision Center designation. It's even bigger that we can cross that state line. And I know that Lynn and Lisa both have been working really hard to reach out to those resources and ask them if they're interested. And I'm sure, before they even get the words out and talk to them about it because they've heard about the Envision Center, they say, "I want to help. We want to be a part of this because we want our community to be a better place." Each of you, by voting yes, has an opportunity to make a huge impact on our community by helping us to have one location where our folks can go, get those resources, become stable, and self-sufficient. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or I think Lynn wants to speak as well.
Thank you, Ms. Kofler.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Next up to speak, we had Ms. Lynn Pennell.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I am so excited that we are able to share this opportunity with you all today. Bristol Redevelopment Housing Authority is honored by HUD to receive this designation. We're honored to offer this service to our community, and we're excited about the impact that this program is going to have on our community. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what will be going on. I am the Resident Services Manager at the Housing Authority, and I will be the Director of the Envision Center. And so our staff, our Resident Services staff, that already provides incredible resources and time with our residents, will be able to share that now with members of the community. So the programs that we already run through the Housing Authority, we have two self-sufficiency programs that have been in existence. The Family Self-Sufficiency Program since 2006 has received a lot of support and has seen a lot of success in people that they've been able to help move on from subsidized housing to independence. We have had several people that have been able to buy homes as a result of the effort that we have put in to their programming, helping them to eliminate barriers to employment so that they can hold down full-time jobs, helping them to connect to services that make them ready, help to clean up their credit, and help them to be responsible, good homeowners. And so we're excited to be able to offer those same services now to other people. We also have elderly services, help there with people who are on fixed incomes and have helped. So we have experience in helping people to maintain that level of living and to expand and have resources to continue to live there. We have people who know what they're doing and have connections in the city. At the Housing Authority, we have been able to host the Bristol Coalition that has been going longer than I have been there. And I've been there for over, excuse me, over 14 years. So the Coalition's been going for about 20 years now, and it's a monthly meeting of area service providers and agencies that meet together to share resources together. So there are about 20 to 25 agencies that meet on a regular basis to help to share their programs. That's an incredible opportunity for us. And so we know who to call. We know who does what in the community, and we know who to call. Housing is our specialty. And so one of the incredible opportunities that we'll have at the Envision Center is helping people to have direct connections with people who can help housing happen for them. And if they have barriers to housing, we can help them work through to eliminate those so that they're ready. If they don't have the proper IDs or proper documents, then we can help them get those. We can help work through there. Right now, we also offer Project Advance, which is a city project as well. We've been privileged for the last two years to receive CDGB fundings for Project Advance. That's an incredible job search program. We have one of our staff that's dedicated to keeping an exhaustive list of jobs in our community, both sides of the line, our complete community, from minimum wage jobs all the way to professional jobs. So when people come to us, we can say, "These jobs are available." We help resume building, help you put your resume together. We'll do job interview tests, questions. We'll get you ready. We'll help you practice so that you're ready with that. We have connections with clothes. So if you don't have the right clothes for a job interview, we will help to make that happen, help connect you to whatever it is that will help you be successfully employed. And that's great. We have a computer lab that's moving to the Envision Center. We have GED classes that have gone on now for several years there, meets twice a week. And having this as part of the Envision Center will mean that they will have other opportunities for referrals, and that message of GED and the importance of education will get out there. Virginia Highlands Community College is an incredible partner with us. They'll have a spot where they can come, and they can provide registration times and opportunities for classes. We have connections with the community health system, with the Health Department, and with Crossroads Medical Mission, with Highland's Community Services, with People Incorporated in the vast numbers of programs that they offer. Ballad Health has come on board as a partner with us. Their Community Health Worker Program wants space at the Envision Center to be able to offer services there and to meet with clients. And their peer recovery support is looking to have a peer recovery specialist with us all the time. The United Way is a valuable partner, as is DSS. And we're so thankful that now we have an opportunity to bring all of these people together, to offer them time here in Bristol, to meet with and to offer their incredible services and to make our community a better place. So we thank you for hearing us. We thank you for the vision that you have for Bristol, and we hope that you will see that this will be an important step in helping those who struggle day-to-day, not just to continue to struggle, but to have the resources available to help to climb out of their struggles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pennell. That was everybody that had signed up to speak during the public hearing. If there's anybody else that would like to speak but didn't get a chance to sign up, they're more than welcome to. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to mention two things real quick. You all have six letters of support that were submitted by the applicant from different agencies. Also, we, of course, as required by certified mail, contacted the adjoining property owners. There were four of those, and two of those contacted me to just ask more about it. When I explained it, both of them were, I think the same words were, "That sounds like a really good idea." And they were both business owners that are across this, across, I don't know if that section's called Lee Highway or Moore Street, but anyway, across the main street there. So I just wanted to note that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. I was going to mention, and if the clerk, when she does the minutes, could show that the letters we received, even though people aren't here, that they, the organizations that supported this, let the record show that. So, all right, with nothing further, I will go ahead and close the City Council side of the public hearing, and also want to thank the members of the Planning Commission for coming out tonight for these two public hearings as well.
I'll close the Bristol, Virginia Planning Commission portion of the public hearing, and I want to thank everyone who spoke concerning the project. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we will move now to item number three, COVID-19 update from the Health Department. We have Dr. Shelton from the Mount Rogers Health District. Appreciate you coming and updating us. Thank you.
Thank you for having me this evening. I was last here at the end of July, and things have continued on since then. So I'm Dr. Karen Shelton. I'm the Health Director for the Mount Rogers Health District, which covers eight localities, including Bristol, Washington, Smith, Withland, Grayson, Carroll, and Galax. So across our health district, it's been active ever since the beginning of COVID. Currently in Bristol, we're at 216 cases with 14 hospitalizations and seven deaths. That gives us approximately 3.2% of those who were diagnosed have passed away, and approximately 6.4% of those who were diagnosed have been hospitalized. These are comparable to state rates of 2.1% deaths and 7.2% hospitalizations. In the month of July, when I last saw you, we'd had 53 cases that month, giving us a total of just 57 cases total. But in the month of August, we surged ahead with 64 more cases. And in September, we had a total a little bit less of 33 cases. But as of today, we're already at 32 cases for the month of October. So this is a month that's going to be surging ahead as well. I think I have a slide presentation. Should be up there. So as that's coming up, I give a handout to you just discussing regarding the rates in Bristol specifically. What we have seen regionally is that we are beginning to have an increase of cases again. We had kind of plateaued and come down just a couple weeks ago. We were having a decrease, but this, the last two weeks, we're having another increase again. The Bristol City Schools have been in session since their beginning, and I have to say, have done admirably well with all their parameters. We have not, knocking on wood here, had to put any whole classes or whole schools in quarantine at this time. They have done very well with their mitigation strategies of wearing face masks, socially distancing, eating separated, taking their breaks far apart, and continuing to educate and teach those in-person, those who wish to be in-person, and virtual, those who wish to be virtual. So very much congratulations to the school for how well they've done. We do see an increase of cases daily within the community and know that that may have further impact on our schools. So we're thrilled that they've been able to have as much in-person learning as they have, and will continue to work with them daily on the cases that come up in the community. So as we look here, again, at the state of Virginia, we had some computer issues today, so these numbers came from the end of last week. But you can see across the state, we're at over 155,000 cases now. And southwest Virginia is a dark blue. Again, this was talking about the rising of, we have moderate community transmission within southwest Virginia at this time, in the far southwest, that goes from With County to the tip of Lee. Certain cases across the state in the central area there, you see the darker blues, a little higher transmission. Up until just a few weeks ago, we were in that high transmission. And I do feel that with the cases that we've had more recently, we'll probably be entering the dark blue again soon. Specifically, as you look across, and this is a slide from Ballad Health and their 21-county Upper East Tennessee and Virginia conglomeration, you can see that throughout the spring of the March, April, and May timeframe, our cases were relatively small throughout our communities. In the beginning of May, Tennessee opened up, and we were very concerned to see what the effects of opening up in Tennessee would be as more businesses and restaurants opened. Virginia did not open up until June the 10th. We can see it took about six weeks in Tennessee for the numbers to begin to rise. Tennessee are the orange-barred numbers, and they began to rise rapidly. They rose so rapidly that they did put in a mask recommendation for the state of Tennessee, which subsequently, they did have a decline of some of their numbers. In Virginia, represented on the top bar by the darker blue, we had a small, a little slower rise resulting from our June 10th opening. And you can see, we're still having daily around the same number of cases. What we generally saw through the summer months was that we had a lot of people going out and doing more things. We had a lot more travel to local hotspots and other domestic hotspots. Few people even braved airplanes. And so we've had an increasing number of cases. And what we had seen in the other side of our district, in the Twin County community, is that when you have a lot of cases in your community, you will unfortunately breach into your most vulnerable population, which is your long-term care facilities. And so as we had a rising of cases in the Bristol, Washington, and Smith County areas throughout the summer, we did begin to see a breach into our long-term care facilities with increasing cases there. As a result of increasing cases within these facilities, we unfortunately did see more hospitalizations and more deaths from COVID in all of our localities of Bristol, Washington, and Smith, and other localities throughout the district. When it comes to the 133 deaths that we've had throughout the Mount Rogers Health District, all but approximately 20 of those were in patients and people aged 70 or greater. So almost all of our deaths are for those over age 70. So we know that the elderly are particularly vulnerable when it comes to COVID-19 disease. As we look at the Mount Rogers Health District in general, like I said, it's been very active. We have anywhere from 20 to 30 cases per day across the district, and yesterday hit our record of 52 cases in one day. Bristol, you can see, again, started slow, and then we've had surges of cases throughout, and particularly through the month of August was one of our busiest months. Washington County, you can see similarly having increases and even more increases within the last week in Washington County. Last week, we had at least three days where we had 17 cases a day in Washington County. Smith County similarly having some surges, although a little relaxation. As far as what we're seeing, as far as where the cases are coming from, the greatest risk for getting COVID-19 disease, number one, is a household contact. If someone in your house has COVID-19 disease, you're at highest risk for getting this. This has to do with the nature of the disease. When we do a case investigation, we talk with the person who has been diagnosed with COVID. We find out when their symptoms began, and from that, we can trace and track where they've been most infectious and who may have been in close contact with them. Your infectious time is from the time of onset of symptoms and two days before that, which is the problem with COVID, is you can be infectious and not even feel sick yet, which is why it keeps spreading. We also have people who have this disease who go through their entire course with absolutely no symptoms whatsoever. They are also infectious. And so we have people who are silently spreading the disease and don't even know they have it. So that is why the diagnosis and the isolation for those who are sick for approximately 10 days or longer as symptoms prevail, or for those who are in quarantine who have been exposed, lasts for 14 days. A close contact is a person who has the highest risk of getting sick. So a close contact is someone who has been within six feet for more than 15 minutes. There are other things that we take into consideration when we talk about close contacts. So highest risk, again, is those who live in a household with someone, also those who share a car ride with someone. Generally, in a car, you're there for more than 15 minutes, you're closer than six feet, and the windows are closed, so very high-risk environment. And the other high-risk environment is eating a meal together. So people eating a meal together, generally sitting at a regular-sized table, they may be across from each other, they're talking, and during this meal, there's a high risk of exposure to COVID. So as we look in Bristol, our cases per week have ranged from early-on days, you know, one or two cases per week, and now we're having anywhere from seven to 23 cases per week. We did have an outbreak in one of our long-term care facilities here in Bristol when we had our highest days of the 34 cases at that time. You can see Washington County continues to surge ahead. Like I said, per week, they have more on the order of 40 to 50 cases per week. And Smith County, also in the 40 cases per week range, with also some long-term care facility peaks in there. When we talk with our school systems, we talk a lot about the metrics. And when we talk with our community, the metrics of what is going on within the community. Again, we're seeing a rise of 15.6 cases. This is within a seven-day timeframe, an average per 100,000 population. And a lot of people talk about testing positivity. We've been generally lower than 10% positivity, which is a good marker to be below 10% for most of this. We've had rises and bumps in through there. Outbreaks, we've had some within the Bristol community, and the bottom line has to do with the percentage of healthcare workers. Washington County is working on a 24-case incidence rate right now with 10% positivity, and Smith County at 15.9% case incidence with a lower positivity rate currently. This is another metric that the CDC developed for schools, looking at, when you go back to school, what is your risk in your community? And they look at case incidence rate. You have to be very careful when you look at these rates. They're not apples-to-apples. The CDC uses a 14-day rolling average. So it's a little bit of a different marker as we look at that. They also look at positivity rate. And then we look at, the CDC metrics for going back to school are heavily weighted toward whether or not your school system can provide good social mitigation. And when they talk about the social mitigation to be provided, they talk about, are you wearing face masks all day, K through 12? Are you social distancing greater than six feet or greater? Are you able to wash hands, disinfect, and stay home when sick, the things that you talked about earlier? So Bristol has been red some of the time, yellow some of the time. Washington and Smith are red right now. Sometimes it changes day-to-day depending on the metrics. And they're, actually, I think Washington County started back this week, and Smith County in a couple weeks. One of the things that we can do as a community to help, there is an app called COVID Wise that is something you can put on your smartphone, you can download it onto your phone. This is an app that will help to detect those who may have been in close contact, and you don't even know that this person was positive. So this is not a government tracker or anything like that. It's not even activated unless you become a case. If you become a case, you put in a PIN number, and then it uses a Bluetooth range thing, I'm not a tech-savvy person, to notify the contacts who may have been within the six feet for more than 15 minutes, people you may not even know. We also advocate getting tested if you feel like you may be sick or if you may be a contact to a case. The sooner that we can diagnose cases, the sooner that we can... The sooner that we can diagnose cases, the sooner that we can help people get into isolation and quarantine so they don't continue spreading the disease. The Virginia Department of Health website, you could put in your ZIP code and find testing sites. Here in Bristol, we know that Ballad Health does have testing sites. We know that the southwest community clinics have rapid tests in Bristol, as well as Metaview and Saltville. Some of our local providers also provide testing, and our local health department right here at Bristol does provide testing on Mondays, Thursdays, and Fridays. This is by appointment. We ask that you call in advance. We do not have the rapid test, unfortunately, at the health department. But we have you call in advance such that we get all the demographic information over the phone, so that when you come for your appointment, literally, you stay in your car, you drive up, you get your swab, you drive away. It's very fast, no papers passed, very efficient. The other place where we've seen a lot of cases that are coming in clusters right now is at churches. We actually do highly recommend for church services to continue. We know that people, this is a very trying time, and faith is very important at this time, so we do encourage our religious services to continue worshiping. But we would ask that they worship safely by wearing face masks, by socially distancing, by avoiding passing common objects. There's, on the Virginia Department of Health website, there is a link with some of the governor's recommendations on how to have safe, COVID-safe worship times. There are also tools for businesses, and Department of Labor and Industry is also involved in helping make our businesses safer workplaces as far as what are the things you can do within your business setting to decrease exposure. I will tell you that consistently, one of the greatest exposures at the workplace is eating a meal together. People will wear their masks, and they'll take them off and have a lunch break. That puts more people in quarantine than anything. Also, we know that people who work together tend to be friends and to do things after work in the evenings or on weekends. And so, while people may work together and not expose each other in the workplace, they are continuing to expose their friends and even family in the evenings and weekends through other social activity. So, we want people to be out and be social. We just want them to do it smartly, to use common sense, to use COVID sense as far as the things that they can do to decrease the spread of disease. So, as we've talked, oh, a little word on Halloween. You wanted me to put in something about Halloween. So, safety for Halloween this year. Things that you don't touch are best. Things that you can socially distance with are best. Things that you can wear masks for are best. So, when you think about trick-or-treating, don't be handing out the candy individually. Don't let the children put the candy in the hand in the candy basket. Prepackage them, sit them out, let them take a package if that's what it is. Trunk-or-treats, same thing, again, distance the cars. Have prepackaged things for people to take rather than touching common objects. There's some other things that are posted on our social media page, Mount Rogers, Virginia Department of Health. Things that are not good ideas are things where people are very close and socially gathered. Haunted houses, where you're inside and screaming and touching lots of objects. There are some outdoor haunted houses that our health department has worked with to try to make sure that they're as safe as possible. You just have to be aware that there are no zero-risk situations. Wherever you go and whatever you do, you just have to assess the risk of your activity, and for yourself or your loved one, if that's a risk that you're able to take. So, the main things as we've discussed, and thank you Mayor Hartley for pointing them out at the very beginning, wear a mask, socially distance. And the wearing a mask is inside. Even if you're six feet apart or more, wearing a mask is still protective. As many things as you can do altogether are the safest. So, socially distancing, hand washing, using the hand sanitizer, thank you very much for this. And then, regularly cleaning and disinfecting not only your houses, but your places of work, and self-monitoring. If you feel sick, don't go to work. Now, I should have a slide on the symptoms. When we talk about symptoms, the mantra has always been fever, cough, and shortness of breath. Less than 50% of people have these, all these three symptoms. Most, over 50% of people do not have a fever. We have seen headaches, runny nose, slight cough, allergy symptoms, sinus congestion, ear aches, fatigues, muscle aches, abdominal pain, diarrhea, loss of taste and smell. Unfortunately, this disease mimics about every virus out there. So, just have a very low tolerance, and you know, in the past, we've always kind of been, oh, we'll make it through work today, let's go to work. We don't feel 100%, but we can make it. But just think that you may be spreading COVID to your coworkers or to the public that you work with, so be very cautious, self-monitor, and stay home when you're sick. The flu vaccine will be very critical this year because we do not yet have the COVID vaccine. The flu vaccine will help with one of our respiratory illnesses, and so, we highly advocate flu vaccine for everyone this year. Just one mention as far as the health department, you know, our job has been to monitor this communicable disease and try to stop it. Early on, we thought maybe we could stop COVID, but as the world surged ahead, we realized that we could not stop it. We could only slow it down so that when it, as it runs its course, we are able to manage it. So, the things we're trying to manage is not overwhelming our healthcare facilities. We want to make sure that the hospitals have enough beds for those who are sick with COVID, but also enough beds for those in our community who have other medical problems as well. During this time, we've also been able to get more PPE or protective equipment so that our first responders and healthcare providers can continue to care for our community. During this time, also, additional medical advances have been made in caring for COVID-sick patients as far as antivirals and other procedures and protocols that can help them have better outcomes. And additionally, we're getting closer to a vaccine. We look forward to the day when we have a safe and effective vaccine that is available for us. So, until that time, we'll continue with our mission to try to protect the community from COVID. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you again, Dr. Shelton. I appreciate a very good presentation. In fact, I had a couple of things I was going to ask about, like Halloween, but you already touched on it.
Mr. Eads, you have questions.
But I do appreciate both the information and the work that you're doing, working with, as you mentioned, the schools, I know the city staff, Mr. Eads and stuff, and everyone all throughout our community. So, thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to share.
All right. Item number four, a proclamation recognizing adverse childhood experience awareness and action month for October 2020. Staff report.
Counsel, October is Adverse Childhood Experiences Month, and October 22, 2020 is Adverse Childhood Experiences Action Day. We have a proclamation here tonight recognizing the month of October as Adverse Childhood Experience Awareness Month.
All right. I don't think anyone signed up to comment on this, but if anyone would like to. We have the reading of the proclamation. You want me to do that?
It's up to you.
I'll read it. It's fine. Proclamation recognizing adverse childhood experiences awareness and action month, October 2020. Whereas adverse childhood experiences, Aces, such as poverty, racism, abuse, neglect, a parent who suffers from substance abuse or mental illness, and unsafe neighborhoods are harmful events that happen during childhood. And whereas studies in the fields of neurobiology, psychology, epigenetics, childhood development, and medicine, among others, show that Aces create toxic stress in children that has lasting consequences for their physical and emotional health into adulthood and can be passed on to the next generation. And whereas research shows that exposure to Aces and toxic stress significantly increase a person's risk for chronic disease, obesity, premature death, mental illness, substance abuse, incarceration, and becoming a victim of violence. And whereas, Aces have been declared a public health crisis by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and nearly 60% of adults report at least one ACE with economic burdens in our neighboring state of Tennessee, estimated by the Sycamore Institute to be 5.2, I assume that's supposed to say million annually with dollars, with similar economic burdens in Virginia. And whereas, by working together through innovative collaborative approaches to prevent or mitigate the negative effects of Aces that can help individuals build resilience to adversity through safe, stable, and nurturing relationships at home and in the community. And whereas, in 2019, through Bristol's promise, Bristol launched a trauma-informed system of care as best practice following recommendations to do so by the Substance Abuse Mental Health Service Administration. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the city council of Bristol, Virginia, do hereby recognize the month of October as ACE's Awareness Month, and Thursday, October 22, 2020, as ACE's Action Day. And Bristol, and encourage all residents to become informed about the impact of ACEs and toxic stress, and learn of the trauma-informed approaches that promote prevention, healing, and resiliency in children, adults, and communities in order to build a stronger and healthier Bristol. Together as city leaders and community partners, this proclamation indicates our commitment to exploring new ways to make Bristol a more resilient community for all its citizens. So, what's the pleasure of counsel?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number five, supplemental appropriation of $652,048.
Counsel, Ms. Bradlin's on the phone. I think maybe she can hear us, and she'll be able to go through this here shortly.
Yes, Mr. Eads, I'm here. Please let me ask the council if you're not able to hear me. Members and members of the municipal office agenda, item supplemental appropriation of $652,048. This is additional appropriation to the original fiscal 21, fiscal year 21 budget. Police department has four opportunities, a medium grant, which is, it's issued from medias paid for training in the 911 center. Appreciated the federal portion of the cost of paying work leave, free burn, stop cost plan, which is approved on July 28, 2020, at $126,018. Police receive a $2,500, the 10911 grant. It is going to be used to cover the cost of equipment, labor, and service for the town rate of current, which is one system, and the next 10911 system. That amounts to $314,595, by the three. Resigned to $6,114, insurance company of $1,866, to the equity company to offer the repairs to one of the vehicles. Eight locality spending of $1,900. This was an increased amount of funds received for the fire department. Eight location money of, what, three, three days, $1,999. Gas, day grants for traditional alternative, key project, day grants for the $928. Public service has 200 feet, care post of $18,248. TV development, ETS grant of $50,000, and non-development from the last person that paid of that, well, F regional fund grant, for American merchants that pass city of rich $8,400. For a test, $106,040. Lot of feedback tonight. You can see clearly. Sorry, Mr. Eads, I had a lot of feedback.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So, staff request, and the council approved the supplemental appropriation as listed. Did one appoint a combat, did the justice, the real time vote, does reply for this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. Okay, public comment. I don't think we know no one that signed up, if anyone would like to. All right, no comment. What's the pleasure of counsel?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Let's see, next item is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Counsel, I think you'll have to pull out the meeting September 22nd, do that separately.
Okay, can I withdraw my motion and make a new motion?
Yes, you may.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the September 22nd minutes.
Okay, there are two sets of minutes for September 22nd. One for a called meeting and one for the regular meeting.
Both of those need to be pulled.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the motion would be to approve anything except minutes from September 22nd for any meeting.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne to approve the consent agenda except for the two sets of minutes from the September 22nd.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Stain.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay, so now, do we have a motion to approve the two sets of minutes from September 22nd?
I move to approve both sets of minutes from September 22nd.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Stain.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. There being no further business, stand adjourned.